Well, I'm just gonna say, I think Georgia, the governor of Georgia is crazy for what he's doing.
Me too, me too.
Totally crazy.
Oh. Yep, we'll launch right at six.
That's a good idea.
City Council meeting for April 21st, and thank you very much for joining us. A call of meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Good evening, Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertoni.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here. And this evening, we don't have anyone to do an invocation for us, so let us have a moment of silent prayer, if you would please. Amen. And would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel reports, please. Councilman Vicaro, would you like to begin, please?
He's muted.
And Councilmember Vicaro, you need to unmute.
Sorry, I got it, sorry. Everybody who is out there watching, I hope everyone is staying safe. I also want to thank all the first responders, who are doing a great job in our city. Who I see out there every day, our hospital workers, our firefighters, our police, the healthcare workers, and all the different aspects of healthcare out there in the city. One thing I just wanted to say, I believe what we need to do a little bit more is to communicate what we're doing in the city, what our city workers are doing out there. I get asked a lot by our citizens, hey, what are you guys doing? We're not hearing that much. I think it would be really good if we kind of got that message out to our citizens of what our city workers are doing, our police, our fire, so they kind of know what's happening, because sometimes people do feel like they're in the dark, especially during this time, when it's, you know, everybody's sheltered in place, which they should be. But they also want to hear from us too, and hear from, you know, the people, you know, who run our city. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And the last thing I wanted to say is, about two, three months ago, I had mentioned the Heart of Fairfield plant. I don't know where we're at right now, I know it's been a tough time. But I would really like to see in the upcoming, maybe one of the upcoming meetings in May, just a really brief review of what we're doing, or are we doing anything? Because I get asked that a lot, too. Especially now, you know, the way businesses are, and people are sort of a little gun shy about even starting businesses because of what's happening. But the Heart of Fairfield plant is something that's going to be really critical for us in the future. So we're really, we do need to have a short update on that, so. And that's my report, but everybody, please stay safe out there.
Wonderful suggestion, thank you very much, Rick. Councilwoman Moy, would you like to begin, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Councilman Vicaro, I'm thankful for everybody who is out there, every single one of you. And I don't go out much, because I just have too many risks with me. But I was out yesterday, because I went to the doctors. And I did drive through Allenwood Park, and I found three friendly tents out there again. And so I'm wondering how that's going with the police going in, because obviously, these vagrants are moving themselves around, they're not staying in their, I don't know if they're not getting the message, or they're just blatantly thumbing their nose at us, which is usually what they're doing. Last night, my husband went down to a local place to eat down on West Texas Street, and there are three vagrants in there. One of them got in my husband's face and spit, and there were two others. And the, the people who were working in there were women who were smaller. These people were 51-50, they smelled like urine. And, you know, my husband thought, well, I can take them out, along with their two other gentlemen there. But am I gonna be put in jail if I push them out, because they just assaulted me by spitting on me? And am I gonna get in trouble, or the cops gonna take me away and not them? So people are asking me this literally every day. What are we doing to protect the rights of regular citizens? We seem to be pouring money and protection and everything into our homeless folks. We want to make sure their civil rights are protected. They're taking it to us. And our small businesses can't take this on top of the closures. So I see just things piling up on our small businesses, and I'm worried, I'm really worried. And they can't afford to bring in, a small place like that can't afford to bring in a guard. They can't afford, you know, a guard there the whole time. And the police can't come to everything. We're gonna have to do something more. And I know, Mr. City Manager, you're working on this. But in the meantime, I think our businesses are closing. And as I said earlier, only 5% of the businesses in this country, small businesses, got anything from the SBA. And I'm wondering, Mr. City Manager, if we could get a report, I know we've got a financial report given to us through March, but I want to see the impact into the next fiscal year. And what are we really looking at? How much have we lost? And right now, I'm sure we can't tell 100%, but we can get a gauge on it now. This has been going on for a while, and I think it's gonna go on for a lot longer. And I'm really afraid for us. We've been through this before. Most of us sitting here went through it in 2008, 2009, 2010, and it was hell. And I don't want us to go through that again. Hey, it was, it was terrible. You know, people, the whole thing, some people have never recovered, who had those layoffs back then. And I, I, I'm really worried about, so if we could get a report, you know, something interim, looking out down the road, the next fiscal year and after that, if this keeps on. I know the impact is large, you know, and I'm grateful that we can afford to pay our employees who aren't working right now as well. I'm grateful and glad to do that, but I just want to see where we are. That and the homeless thing, Mr. Mayor, that's what I'm concerned about. I mean, hearing a lot from the businesses, the mom pops here in town.
Thank you. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, it's funny, I'm like Cat, I don't go out, but I did yesterday, and I actually went to a homeless encampment. A business owner had called, a landowner had called. And I went down to see for myself, and I communicated with our city manager. But on the other side, as far as information, and I agree with Councilmember Vicaro, is information that gets out, and, and actually, Stefan, I want to give you an attaboy, because on your weekly update yesterday, or actually, when I looked at it last night, you started talking first about the COVID-19 response, and especially what we're doing in parks, what's allowed, what's prohibited, you know, activities, and it was information for us. Then you went to workforce accommodations, and then, of course, you spent time with the homelessnessists, the funding for the housing, the assistance and prevention, where that money's coming from, where it may or may not go. You went into community partners, then you went into public safety, then community and economic development. Things like the new 190-unit mixed-income apartment building. You went into infrastructure, and actually, I sent it back to him yesterday, and I apologize, Stefan, I'm kind of catching you unaware, but I said, this is such great information, I would fax it to all three newspapers. Because, I mean, it covers from soup to nuts. The city hasn't shut down, and it's what everybody's doing. From the homicide arrest, which, I knew we had a homicide, but I didn't know we had an arrest. But these are things that people want to know, and when they ask us, obviously, we don't know, because there is so much going on. But your weekly update, sir, was outstanding. If you could keep that up and get it out to the press, so people know, this is what we know, and we know what you know. We're not hiding anything. Times are tough, the city hadn't shut down, and we're moving forward, so. A little good, a little bad, and we'll get there eventually. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, please, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my report is gonna be very short and sweet. I just want to congratulate and thank all of our residents. Anytime that I have to go out to provide, to get, you know, essentials for my family, I have encountered Fairfield residents at their very best. Very courteous, very aware of the situation that we're in, and very kind. And so I just want to thank our residents for being in the ring with us in this situation. I do want to confirm what Councilman Vicaro said, what Councilman Moy said, what Councilman Tim has said. And I have seen an increasing number of encampments popping up all over the place. I know that right next to Bethel Community Church, there is not only an encampment, but what looks like is starting a community out there. So I spoke with Pastor Gilmore, Jesse Branch, and hopefully, we're on top of that situation. But, you know, there is a silver lining, I believe, coming out of this situation. And it's gonna be that we are more kind, we're more patient, and we're more understanding with each other as we move forward. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Stefan, I confirm the attaboy, great job.
And I would like to share some really good news with you. As you probably know, the Slano Transportation Authority does a pretty good job lobbying, not only the state legislature, but also the Congress. And last week, we did a Zoom with the Congress. And glad to report today that the city of Vallejo is going to receive $1.6 million, because dredging the harbor for the ferry system to continue operating is so critically important. And then also, today, I learned that we are going to, and when I say we, I'm talking about the Slano Transportation Authority, but it also affects all the cities. We are going to be receiving $10.4 million for some pretty important projects, including improvements out at the train station, Fairfield Transportation Center, and a number of others. So my hat goes off to all those folks who labor in the various departments, public works particularly, making certain that our needs are manifesting themselves to the point where we compete very favorably. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Yes, sir, a couple of things very quickly, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I appreciate the comments that were made. There's some issues that we're actually working on. One, the Heart of Fairfield report, and thank you, Councilmember Vicaro, for bringing that up. We, we have scheduled that to come before the council on the second meeting of May. Our new Assistant City Manager, David Gassaway, has taken the lead on that with his, his departments. They'll be providing to you an update on status of what's been done to date, as well as where we go for this next year, different projects and things that we're working on for the upcoming year, as well as five years out. We'll also talk a little bit about some of the grant funding statuses that we've been working on, how we pay for some of these projects and things. So expect a good, detailed report on the Heart of Fairfield on the second meeting of May. Quick update on some of our recruitments that we've been working on, too, in particular, the Housing Services Director position that you had approved some months ago, I think, maybe a month or so before I came on board. We have three finalists have been identified. They went through a couple of panel interviews from some outside folks, experts in this area, to present to us three of what they believe are the, are the top candidates. David Gassaway is the hiring manager for this position. They are doing some background checks on those three candidates, and then David will conduct his interviews with them. And we hope to have someone identified within the next couple of weeks. The police chief recruitment is, is going forward, as you're aware, there is a, it is advertised, Bob Marine Associates has put that together for us. Currently, we show that that will close on May 22nd. We, because of the COVID-19 crises, it's likely that we'll extend that close date a few extra weeks. We're gonna watch and see what kind of response we have. To date, I believe we've had, this early on already, I think maybe 20 candidates have applied already, and it's very early in the process. So we look forward to more very qualified individuals applying. It is considered a very favorable position for police chiefs, so there'll be more to come on that. You mentioned the financial report, and thank you for bringing that up as well. Let me kind of give you a quick, where we are right now. HDL, who does our sales tax, they, they deal with our sales tax consulting for both TOT, sales tax, Measure P, those kinds of things. The projection that we have right now shows a, and these are projections, show that we will come, that we'll have about a 15% shortfall this fiscal year, throughout the remainder of this fiscal year, in those tax revenues to the city. The projections further show somewhere in the neighborhood of 30% shortfall next year. Now, again, those are projections, and there's a lot that you're, you're just kind of doing some estimating and guesswork in that, so. And I would say that HDL, when they present these, this information to us, they certainly would rather err on the side of caution. So in other words, they give us maybe a number that is, they feel is pretty good, but maybe a little worse than what it might come out to be, so that they're not guilty of, of being too favorable in coming out on the other end. We will need to dip into reserves this year to balance the budget. The council has set a 20% of our operating cost level that that reserve must be at. We are currently at about 35%. So there's been some very good conservative budgeting going on through the years, so we've been able to really build up that reserve, which is good. We think that we'll probably lose about 1% to 2% after this fiscal year in having to, in having to balance the budget with some reserve money. That equates to about, we think, probably around 32%, down from around the 30, maybe 35%. So at the end of this fiscal year, we project we'll probably still have a reserve at about 32%. And then, of course, that'll dip down even lower next year. We are going through doing modeling of different scenarios that could happen. We're going through the, the process, talking with each of our department heads in preparation for bringing a proposed budget to you very soon for next fiscal year. We're being very careful. As we talked about recruitments before, there are many other open positions that haven't been filled throughout the city right now. I've directed each department head to go through and take a look at those open positions, to take a look at which positions have a higher priority that really do need to be filled, and which positions can we sit on for a little bit longer, to continue to save some money, and be careful as we move forward. We do not anticipate at this point in time that we'll need to go through, as other cities have. You've read in the newspaper probably about Concord, and, and some of our neighboring cities are going through furloughs right now, of folks laying people off already as a result. Because of your very wise budgeting and your decisions over the past several years in building up this reserve, we don't anticipate at this point that the city will have to go through that kind of reduction in forces. We, we are, when you take a look at what happened, and you're right, it was a horrible recession that you went through back in 2007. It's been, what, 13 years now, 12, 13 years? Your, your manpower at that time was somewhere over 670 employees in the city. We've never rebuilt that number back up to that, that level. We are currently at about 570, somewhere in there. So we're operating pretty lean already, and we've, we've been careful, and we'll continue to be careful as we'll watch that. So we'll have more information provided to you on that, but right now, the city, although we're gonna be dipping into some reserves, we, we are in much, much better shape than many of our neighboring communities. And, and again, that's, that's something that you should pat yourselves on the back for. When I came into this position, that was one of the first things that I've noticed, was you've done a very good job of balancing that budget, making sure that we're prepared for emergencies. There's a couple of other things that I wanted to bring up real quick here. The homelessness issue, you're right, it continues to be something that we're seeing growing, especially as we go through this crisis. It seems our, our police presence in these, in these camp areas has increased. And we've, we've encouraged them to move along. If you, if you look at Allenwood Park, in the mornings, they're cleared out. By mid-afternoon, we've got tents moving back in. And oftentimes, when we clear them out, they've got to go somewhere, they obviously don't disappear. They're just finding some other park or some other area to camp, and so we're just sort of, it's, it's not an effective or efficient way to do this, but we're sort of chasing them around the city right now. We are sitting down and putting together some strategies to deal with this homelessness, massive homelessness problem that we have in, in our community and in the region. And we're, we're, we're gonna get ahead of this and in front of this. You can't solve homelessness, but we're gonna do a better job of managing that. So there's gonna be some things coming before you in the coming months that will be pretty, pretty push the envelope, I think, on how we handle some of these things. We absolutely, though, want to make sure that our parks, our open spaces, our gathering spaces are clear, and that our business areas where, where these wonderful small business owners, that they have places where they're not having to deal with that, where they can conduct business, the people can come there and feel safe as we're doing that. That's our highest priority. So more to come on that, I'll stand for some questions if you have any, but there'll be some more information. And, and one other thing here, and Councilmember Vicaro did talk with me about this earlier today. The mayor will be, will be doing, I think on Monday, correct, Mayor?
Yes.
He's, he's going to be doing a videotape addressing many of these issues for our, for our community, and we appreciate the need to get that word out. We're gonna do a better job of reaching out to the community with those kinds of things. And so the mayor has agreed to, to do that, and there'll be more to come on that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Attorney, we met in closed session prior to the beginning of this meeting, and would you like to do the report, please?
Yes, the council in a closed session discussed a, discussed and approved a purchase and sale agreement. And that's with Green Valley Land LLC. It's a 1.56-acre site that would be used for a fire station. And it's the property that's identified in the closed session notice for this evening. The purchase price is a discounted price of $221,000, with the city to pay all the closing costs. And the closing will be honored before June 30, 2020. The vote on this was 4-0 with the mayor, and then council members Moy, Tim, and Vicaro voting yes, and there were no no votes.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I don't have anything to report this evening, just stay safe, everyone, keep washing your hands, wearing your masks when you're out. Stay six feet apart, that's all.
And if you would like to launch our meeting now, process for public comments, please, Madam Clerk.
Okay, and I will say I have a, I have one letter to read from a resident. Public comment, "The public may comment on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items, except as authorized by law." Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council, and may be referred to staff. Comments will be accepted by email at cityclerk@fairfield.ca.gov. Identify your name, the item you wish to comment on, and the date of the meeting. All comments received prior to the start of an item will be read aloud for up to four minutes. In pursuant to Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code Section 54953, all votes shall be by roll call, due to council members participating by teleconference.
And if you would read the, the public comment letter, please?
Yes. And I just wanted to say, Don LeVar is aware of this letter, and has spoken to this gentleman, Anthony Ordaz. And I'll read the letter. First, I want to thank you all for the time and effort you guys put into this city. My name is Anthony, and I have been looking after and working with the homeless in our city for about two years now. My question comment is about the COVID-19 process regarding the homeless individuals in our city. During the city council meeting on April 7th, Matt Lukinbach mentions relying on CDC at time 36:19. Not sure what that means. CDC protocol for COVID-19 is to allow people who are living in encampments to remain where they are. Why was this CDC guideline not followed less than 48 hours after the April 7th meeting? I ask this because just after midnight on April 9th, the Fairfield PD cleared Allenwood Park, which was sadly occupied by more than 10 homeless individuals with tents. I completely agree with making the park off-limits at night and safe for the community, but during this crisis, dispersing them from their sleeping quarters at this given time would increase the percentages of the community being affected if they are not housed properly. In this situation, they were just pushed out into the streets and basically just told to move on, which is against the recommendations by CDC. The hit team was not present. Shouldn't the hit team be present during planned operations that concern the homeless in our city? If CDC guidelines are not going to be followed, then shouldn't an operation regarding the homeless be executed at a time where the officers who are putting their lives at risk as well have the means to place individuals in shelters? I am aware there are shelters available, but those shelters are not open 24/7. This shelter-at-home situation could become pointless if the homeless are just left out there to roam around and possibly contaminate those things we come in contact with when out on our essential trips, including air. Our city should not just feel obligated to protect the citizens of our city, but also the homeless individuals as well, which we are not doing when they are left in the streets to basically die off. Are they not God's children, regardless of their circumstances, mental health status, or diseases? What are we doing to protect them? I asked several homeless individuals, after witnessing the incident at Allenwood Park, a specific question regarding a possible shelter-and-home situation, solution for them, and I received a yes from more than 15 homeless individuals, including the infamous bus stop slash Pennsylvania Senior Citizen Center. Very kind lady. I received a quote, "Hell yeah," a few times, but not one person said no, and everyone I asked gave me the respect to listen to my question and provide their answer. Please provide me with the contact info for someone other than hit team that I can share this info questionnaire with, who is directly involved or in charge of the homeless situation, short-term and long-term. The short-term COVID-19 situation regarding the homeless... The short-term COVID-19 situation regarding the homeless should get more attention than the long-term solution, unfortunately. Feel free to contact me at any given time as well." And again, as I said, Don LeBarre did receive this message and has spoken to him, but he still wanted his comment read. Thank you.
And thank you for reading that. I will now convene the meeting of the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District Board, please. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the PV-MMD or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And we have just the one item. If you would read that, please, the resolution.
Yes. It's on consent. Do I still need to read it, Greg?
There's no need to read the resolution. It's on consent.
Okay. Entertainer motion then to approve?
So move.
Okay, thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, is there a second, please?
Second.
We have two seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Vacaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bertani?
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Yes. Well, now, motion carries unanimously. We'll now reconvene the meeting of the city council, the consent calendar, please, Madam
Oh, this is probably when I should have read this earlier. "Pursuant to Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code Section 54953, all votes shall be by roll call due to council members participating by teleconference. And all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item." And on item two, we do have a conflict for Councilmember Vacaro. And on item three, we have a conflict for Councilmember Vacaro and Vice Mayor Bertani.
Yes, in this case, the two members can remain in the meeting, just like we do on a consent calendar. They just simply have to abstain from voting since they own property in these affected areas and that will be noted in the minutes. So, so again, a motion can be made, a second can be, can be made. Both the Vice Mayor and the Councilmember Vacaro, I would not make the motion, let the other council members do that and do the second. And then you can register your vote with the abstention on item two for Councilmember Vacaro and three for Councilmember Vacaro and for the Vice Mayor Bertani, item number three.
Okay. Was there a comment or a question?
No, I just said I move.
And I second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Vacaro, with the exceptions of two items.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bertani, with the exception of the one item.
Yes.
And Mayor Price.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we will adjourn now to our next regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, May 5th at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much and good night. We are adjourned.
Everybody be safe.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.